These are guys who are on the road. They performed all over. They, you know, guitar. Uh, it's more. I've seen that at the Sunset Casino. So if you would love listening to it.
It was recent.
I've not seen it. It's called Rumble Street. And they, and you can buy their albums. Is that the black jacket? No, the, is it the black jacket concerts?
Yeah, they actually do classical music. He draws.
And sometimes they have themes.
Dear God, we thank you for this day. We also thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and our most valuable asset, the children in this community. We ask your blessings on our superintendent and his staff and blessings on all of our teachers, administrators, and staff that work with their children every day. Our Heavenly Father, we also ask your protection on our first responders, both foreign and abroad. We also ask for guidance for our national, state, and local leaders as they make decisions that affect our lives. We ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stringg, you have a thing?
Yes, sir, just a couple of small things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate, I know our superintendent, Dr. Brackens, and all of the staff that work on this, but I was very pleased to see that our student grades are continuing to increase. And that is significant because we are a large, the largest system in the state. Complex issues that we have to deal with daily, but we are overcoming them. And that's due to the very hard work of all of our teachers and administrators that are on the front line with this every day. So I want to make sure that, uh, that the public knows how hard we work. You can't compare one district to another because we're looking at apples and oranges and the differences that exist. But we know what our kids, our students are capable of, and I just appreciate the hard work and it's, uh, it's paying off. So congratulations on that.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I think Dr. Brackens and her team, as well as superintendent, has done a great job in reference to our report card. State report card was very, very good. We went up two points, um, thanks to District Four. But, uh, I just want to put that out there. Anyway, but we appreciate everything that you guys have done. Our teachers are working real hard in our schools and the our school reflects that. And, uh, just continue what you're doing and we will get there to 100, like the three schools in my district.
Your district. Mr. Paulson.
I'd like to add to that also that I think, uh, I'm just proud of where we at. We've come up from superintendent down to the plant engineers, the teachers, bus drivers, our whole system, our organization, uh, what I've seen is clicking on all cylinders. Uh, that starts at the top and I want to thank you for that.
Mr. Hatchett.
I echo those remarks. Uh, it's wonderful to go up in a report card. We know what it feels like to go down for sure. I wasn't real happy with that, but, uh, it is definitely a pleasure to see that we're moving in a very positive direction and, um, we'll thank everybody for that and everybody involved with the school system. Um, also, at our last meeting, I had spoke on cameras and prayer. Uh, I'd like to, uh, talk about that for a second. We, uh, I spoke with Frank. We got some probably not the best news, uh, with a Supreme Court ruling that come out in Florida. Am I correct, Frank?
Yeah, of the Tampa, I believe.
Yes, uh, it was not the best news, uh, but I'd like to. For the prayer. Now, the cameras is good news. They say do it. They said do it tomorrow.
I want to discuss that and see if we have a cost projection with this later.
At the end of the day, the, it's, it's, it's not a deal breaker, but it's disheartening. And, uh, I would just like to ask that the attorneys delve off a little deeper and see if we can't.
I have looked at it carefully. I can talk about it now or I can leave.
I think that's probably going to be a discussion for later. But anyway, I will, I will definitely appreciate you doing that and let's, you know, keep moving in that direction.
Yes, sir, we will start with our action. Oh, I'm sorry.
I meant to, I talked to you earlier. I, I think we can treat the same items and the flow through items as a en masse, uh, based on my review of the statute. We don't need to change the actual format of the agenda, but I don't think you have to go through every one of those. Flow through and consent.
Okay. Yeah, do good with that.
Okay, we're ready? Okay. All right, we'll start with the action items. I do, uh, want to pull, uh, action item C2, resolution request, um, for the Alabama Attorney General Office. We just need to, um, get some more information and have our attorneys, um, make sure that they're aware of all of that information. So we will pull action item C2. With that being said, we'll start with action item C1. It's the selection of underwriters. Uh, we selected Stifle and Piper to serve as our, uh, underwriters for our bond. Uh, there is no, um, financial, um, gain of that right at this minute. We do have Stifle being the senior lead underwriter. That's action item C1. C2 is action item that was pulled. C3 is with Xerox. It's a revision. Uh, the Xerox has requested some minor language change, uh, so we are in the process of getting that language changed for Xerox. That's action item C3. C4 is with the Hundred Black Men of Greater Mobile. It is to provide and initiate programs to assist students on all grade levels and developing skills and habits necessary for meaningful and productive lives. Uh, that's coming out of district local funds for $400,000.
Mr. Thregill, I saw with interest on news, uh, that something about this where they were going to select like 100 students, targeted students or whatever term you want to use like that, uh, to do some particular program. I'm, I'm not saying not this, but it, it shows how much activity they're involved in.
Yeah, I think they're Bishop State today doing a mentoring program with, with a lot of our students. All right, action item C5 is LBP interpreting for Sunny Callahan School for the Deaf and Blind. It is to provide sign language, um, for the deaf and blind. Uh, that's coming out of state funds for $270,000. C6 is Level Data. It is to provide a one-year return on instruction license. That's coming out of district local funds for $145,278. C7 is with the University of South Alabama Mitchell Center for the 2026 Mobile County Public Schools High School Graduation Cer- Ceremonies. That's coming out of district local funds for $121,300. C8 is with iXL Learning for Theodore High School. It is to provide a one-year iXL classroom license in the subject area of math, English, language arts, and science, social studies for 925 students. It's coming out of Title I funds for $22,432.50. C9 is with Altapoint Health Services for Bay Point Residential. It is to provide, uh, transitional services coming out of Title I funds for $20,000. C10 is with the Gulf Coast Resource and Development Council for Almoh Bryant. It is to, uh, provide funds to implement the project, expanding as, as access and opportunity through wrestling. It's a community development grant for $15,000. C11 is with iXL Learning for Scarborough Middle. It is to provide services of iXL classroom license, uh, for one year in the subject area of math for 600 students, coming out of Title I funds for $14,795. C12 is Cases Associates and Associates for Almoh Bryant. It is to provide professional development for all teachers and staff for three hours. Uh, that's coming out of Title I funds for $13,500. C13 is with the Mobile County Commission for Callaway Smith. It is to provide funds for the awards pro- program, uh, also again coming out of county commission funds for $13,400. C14 is also with the county commission for Holloway Elementary. It is to provide funds to help support the Eagles Dance Club. Uh, again, it's coming out of county commission funds for $12,000.
On those two items?
Yes, sir.
They're actually, they actually mirror each other. The first one is, uh, the county giving us the money and the second one is taking the money and paying Dance 101. So it's really one matter, but.
Did y'all get that? Okay. All right, action item C15 is Dance 101 Studio for Holloway Elementary. It is to provide, um, ballet and jazz dance classes, uh, coming out of state funds for $11,950. C16 is with the University of South Alabama Mitchell Center for the, uh, MCPSS 2026 Signature Academy Showcase, uh, which will be held Tuesday, January the 6th. That's coming out of district local funds for $11,800. C17 is also with the Mobile County Commission for Pillins Middle School. It is to provide funds for the athletic pro- program. Uh, again, it's coming out of county commission funds for $10,000. C18 is also with the county commission for the JRTC STEM Leadership Academy Camp. Um, it's, uh, funded by the Mobile County Commission for $10,000. C19 is the Global, Global Spectrum, uh, for Baker High School's 2026 Prom, which will be held March 13th. It's coming out of local school funds for $9,412. C20 is Solution Tree for Colia Elementary. It is to provide a one-day onsite customized professional development coming out of Title I funds for $8,600. C21 is iXL Learning for Brightland Elementary. It is to pro- provide a, a year subscription site license digital platform coming out of Title I funds for $8,437.50. C22 is also with iXL Learning for Denton Magnet. It is to provide the services of iXL classroom license, uh, for the subject area of math, English, language arts, science, and social studies for 325 students. It's coming out of Title I funds for $8,332.50. C23 is iXL Learning for Williamson High School. It is to provide services for iXL classroom license for 400 students, coming out of Title I funds for $8,195. C24 is also with iXL Learning for Callaway Smith. It is to provide services of iXL classroom license for 300 students, coming out of local school funds for $7,050. C25 is Performance-Based Education Company for Almoh Bryant High School. It is to provide a five-day high-impact teacher coaching engagement. It's coming out of Title I funds for $6,750. C26 is the Mobile Symphony Orchestra for Kate Shepherd. It's, uh, to provide music enrichment, coming out of state funds for $6,200. C27 is Everway for Augusta Evans. It is to provide a onsite side-by-side coaching professional development, uh, coming out of Title I funds for $5,250. C28 is with Williamson High School Mechanical Upgrade, uh, Roof Change Order Number Three. Uh, it is a decrease with $56,184.43. That now brings the grand total of $14,716,563.33, and that's coming out of local funds. C29 is the MCPS Video Boards, uh, at eight of our high school campuses. A change order number one. It is a decrease of $20390.55. It brings the grand total of $4,688,933.45, and that's coming out of 2022 bond money. These are not new video boards. These are our existing video boards that we have a credit of over $200,000. C30 is Central Nail High School Athletic Building. Uh, there were nine bids. We went with the lowest bidder of Rogers Construction, uh, for $2,136,000. Um, we are still, uh, I think they received a grant and we're still, uh, trying to come up with the rest of the funds. C20, C31 is B.C. Rain Chiller Replacement Change Order One. Uh, it's a decrease of $279.20, which brings the grand total of $776,620.80. It's coming out of PSCA funds. C32 is Baker High School Field House Upgrade. We had six bidders. We went with the lowest bidder with Youngblood and Barrett Construction. Uh, that total is $349,985, um, fund source to be announced. C33 is Alba Middle School Bleachers. We had three bids. Went with the lowest bidder. Tendall Construction of $190,000. And that fund source, so I'm not sure. I'll find out. C34 is Sale of the Right-of-Way and Drainage Easement of Mobile County of Lumpkin Road. Uh, that financial impact is $21,775, which will be paid to the board.
How much of the right-of-way did they get?
I'm not sure. Do you know? How much? How much?
Like a tenth or a quarter acre, anything like that?
We'll find out.
We move on. Let's not take it.
Okay. A piece? All right, C35 through C42 is personnel listed under separate cover. Are there any questions on the action items? Hearing none, we will move to the consent agenda. D1 with Ed Puzzle with Mobile County Training, uh, to provide school-wide Ed Puzzle, coming out of state funds for $4,940. D2 is with Bird Educational Consulting with Scarborough Middle. It is to provide external consulting and evaluation for the 21st Century, uh, Grant. Uh, that's coming, uh, out of the 21st Century Grant for $4,000. D3 is Quizzie for Theodore High School. It is to provide teachers and students at Theodore High School with six months of Quizzie School Site License for 1,200 students. That's coming out of Title I funds for $3,800. D4 is with iXL Learning for Burrows Elementary. It is to provide a one-year subscription site license digital platform coming out of Title I funds for $3,637.50. D5 is with the Locale, uh, Theodore High School's 2026 Prom, which will be scheduled on March 13th, coming out of local school funds for $3,400. D6 is also with the Locale for Almoh Bryant High School, uh, 2026 High School Prom, which is scheduled for April the 10th, also coming out of local school funds for $3,200. D7 is with Renaissance Learning for Indian Spring. It is to provide Renaissance Learning Site License for, uh, Accelerator Reader for 300 students, coming out of Title I funds for $3,129. D8 is with Tracy Chows for Davidson High School. It is to provide, uh, Class 101 presenters that will host and conduct three total sessions of professional development for teachers. It's coming out of Title I funds for $3,000. D9 is with Renaissance Learning for Grand Bay Middle. It is to provide a school license, uh, for Renaissance vocabulary for 725 students. It's coming out of Title I funds for $2,900. D10 is with, also with Renaissance Learning with Mobile County Training. It is to provide a school license, uh, with Renaissance vocabulary for 499 students, coming out of state funds for $2,500. D11 is Science for Everyone with Line Coff Elementary. It is to provide two 45-minute interactive STEM program sessions, coming out of Title I funds for $2,000. D12 is the Holiday Inn Downtown for Williamson High School 2026 Prom, which will be held Saturday, April the 18th, coming out of local school funds for $1,929.95. D13 is with Dave and Buster's for Callaway Smith, uh, for Governor's Turnaround Incentives for 82 participants. That's coming out of the Governor's Turnaround Fund for $1,688.36. D14 is with iXL Learning for Dolphin Island Elementary. It is to provide a one-year, uh, subscription site license for iXL digital platform, coming out, coming out of Title I funds for $1,668.75. D15 is with Agentic's Learning for Collins Road. It is to provide the entire faculty and staff a professional development, coming out of Title I funds for $1,375. D16 is iXL Learning for Pathway K5. It is to provide services of iXL classroom license, coming out of Title I funds for $1,162.50. D17 is with Dave and Buster's for Williamson High School, to provide the venue for approximately 30 students, coming out of local school funds for $926.69. D18 is Extra Math for Colia Elementary. It is to provide a 12-month premium, premium license, uh, coming out of Title I funds for $500. D19 is with Starfall Education for Path, for Pathway K5. It is to provide a one-year membership software, coming out of Title I funds for $355. D20 is with Laura Moore, um, and District Choir Assessment. Uh, it's coming out of the choir director's account for $200. D21 is an agreement between us and Walden University for student teaching placement. Uh, there's no financial im- impact. D22 is a contract between us and the State Department, um, to have a nurse manager on loan. There's also no financial im- impact. D23 is a contract between us and Musical Beginnings to provide group music lessons to students after school. There's no financial im- impact. D24 is a contract between us and the University of South Alabama for Tanner Williams, uh, to provide, uh, students to obtain field experience. There's no financial im- impact. D25 is Soccer for Life. It is to provide soccer opportunities for children whose families face financial barriers. That comes from the legislative grant. D26 is Out of County Travel. D27, various bids. Are there any questions with the consent agenda items? Hearing, hearing none, we will proceed with the flow-through items. You have listed here, uh, 1 through 12. I know we are, um, in January, we're just going to lump them together, but I will list them out. Flow-through item number one is with First Guard for McGill Tulane, coming out of Title IV funds for $34,613.28. Uh, item two is Kagan PD for Faith Academy, coming out of Title II funds for $26,890. Item three is with Curriculum and Associates for Mobile Christian, coming out of Title IV funds for $9,030. Item four is with iXL Learning Corpus Christi, coming out of Title IV funds for $7,257.50. Item five is with iXL Learning for St. Mary's, coming out of Title IV funds for $5,625. Item six is Worldwide for Faith Academy, coming out of Title IV funds for $4,741. Item seven is with Frenzy for Heart of Mary, coming out of Title IV funds for $2,112.81. Item eight is Kids First for McGill Tulane, coming out of Title II funds for $1,475. Item nine is with HMH St. Pious, coming out of Title II funds for $1,400. Item 10 is also with HMH with Little Flower, coming out of Title II funds for $1,400. Item 11 is Live School for St. Mary's, coming out of Title IV funds for $1,259.60. And finally, item 12 is with Starfall for St. Mary's, coming out of Title IV funds for $355. That concludes our flow-through items. Hearing no questions, we move with, to information items, our monthly financial, as well as our purchase orders over 5,000. And there are no student expulsions.
Yep. Okay. All right, Tony, time for...
Uh, seven employment matters. One's the subject of my, uh, email to the board of October 31st, and they were sent, oh, six sent on 11/7. That we need to address on Monday.
All right.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things. First of all, I forgot to mention in my previous early announcements, I was complimenting Mr. Anderson and the facility staff on their efforts to attract, uh, new employees to our system. I was talking to Mr. Parsons and he can address that. They have a site now on Facebook where they're, uh, offering, uh, employment opportunities for tradesmen. And I happened to notice on Fox 10 News, uh, that they reported the same thing. And I wanted to compliment the Facilities Division, Mr. Anderson and all of his staff for reaching out, and I think that's hopefully gonna pay dividends for us like that. So congratulations on that. And I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, Mr. Parsons, about what you saw like that. Uh, and then the other thing, uh, I had a question that was asked. The rumor mail going around is that if I was a former bus driver, uh, and I wanted to come back, that there would be a hundred-dollar bonus. Is there any credence to that, Mr. Thregill?
It's, it's $10 a day.
Thank you, sir. I did not know the answer to that, but I assumed somebody would know the answer to that, okay? And the last thing I'm gonna say, and this is probably after the fact, I was concerned when a lot of the title funds, uh, were being up, held up with what's happening with the National School Board, uh, the situation, but it seems now looking at this, Mr. Thregill, that those funds are flowing through now. So hopefully there's been no delay in them like that. That sounds good then. Thank you, sir.
Mr. McDavid?
No, sir.
No.
Mr. Hatchett?
Yes, have we received any monies from the, uh, governor yet? The 60-some-odd million? Have they sent that or?
COVID money?
They've already, we've already received that then? Okay.
Let me clarify. I get some clarification on that particular point. Was that, I don't know, it was COVID money, whatever that was. Yeah, I remember. He was in our training thing. We had that same subject, but the amount of it was, uh, 53. That's correct. 58 million. So that was on top of everything else. That was just a one, hopefully, hopefully we can get it. What have we been spending on? I'm sorry. So that, none of that what you just mentioned is not already built in the budget?
Is there any other monies that the governor is, uh, supposed to be allocating? Yes. That would be the only monies?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I talked to the Senator yesterday and that's why I was, I was questioning.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Thregill, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two or three, um, facilities things that are, were mentioned here, and the funding source had to be determined. What does that mean, Mr. Thregill? Some of that, like donation money and then we have to fill it? So we have to... And would that be facilities monies that we receive from the state, that kind of stuff? So we would have to use those monies to complete the projects? Thank you.
On Monday in, uh, fore, we held a routine old racing meeting, uh, Monday.
Nine forty-five? Say nine forty-five. I got 10 o'clock on my schedule, so. Nine forty-five. Well, I don't want to miss it. That's what I don't want to do.
If you get to 10:45, it's over.
I'll be there. I'll be.
All right, will you adjourn?
Some of...